Everyone, to the June 8th City Council meeting. It's six o'clock and let's get this rolling. All right. Can I ask for a roll call, please?
Councilmember Kurt Pinsky Costa.
Present.
Councilmember Lopez Taff.
Here.
Councilmember Middleton.
Here.
Vice Mayor Daniels.
Here.
And Mayor Schaefer.
Here. Next item, please.
The flag salute.
Oh, so Jane, would you believe it's a flag salute?
Absolutely. Please rise.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of America, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next item, please.
This meeting of the Citrus Heights City Council is cable cast live on Metro Cable 14, the local government affairs channel, and the Comcast Consolidated Communications and AT&amp;T U-verse Cable Systems. This meeting is closed captioned and livestreamed at citrusheights.net. Tonight's meeting replays on Monday, June 12th at 9:00 a.m. on Channel 14, and this meeting can also be viewed on the city's YouTube channel.
Next item, please.
Next item is approval of agenda.
Move approval.
Second.
Approval by, move by Daniel, second by Middleton. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed or none? Passes. Next item, please.
Next item is public comment, and if members of the audience wish to address the council during the meeting, please fill out a speaker identification sheet and give it to myself, the city clerk. Speakers are limited to five minutes each. When your name is called, please step forward to the podium and state your name for the record. And Mayor, at this time, I do not have any speaker sheets.
Great, and I so see no speaker sheets. Anybody from the audience care to speak for public comment? Seeing none, move on to the next item, please.
Next item is presentation number four, proclamation of the City of Citrus Heights honoring Dave Mitchell, District Administrator, upon his retirement from the Sunrise Recreation and Park District.
Great. So I have a proclamation here. I've known Dave pretty much since he's taken over the job here, so I'd like to just read this proclamation. I'll come down and ask Dave to come to the podium and maybe say a few words if you're, if you choose. So where is Dave Mitchell's passion for parks and recreation began at an early age when he was very active in the variety of, when he was very active in a variety of activities at his neighborhood park? This passion led Dave's 37-plus-year career in the parks and recreation field, whereas Dave has served the city's, the Citrus Heights community for over 10 years, beginning his career with the Sunrise Recreation and Park District as Director Administrator in June 2012. Whereas during the, his tenure with the district, Dave was responsible for the design and development of various park projects such as Arcade Creek Park. I very much appreciate that Dr. Jana and I, we both participated in the, all the work that went into that, this beautiful park. Mitchell Village, Barrett Ranch, Cabana Dog Park, and over 10 retrofit and redesign playground projects. And whereas Dave, under Dave's leadership, many new recreation programs and special events and activities were created for, for youth, adult, and older age groups. Dave also oversaw the comprehensive update to the district's 10-year master plan and creation of an open space master plan. And whereas Dave has been a champion for the urban forest throughout the Citrus Heights and Recreation District facilities, recognizing that trees make the community and, and out parks are better, are a better place. Make our community and out parks make our better place. Whereas Dave was instrumental and an instrumental partner in the development of the Arcade Creek Trail and ongoing efforts to create a safe, comfortable, and convenient areas of the, of residents to walk and enjoy nature. Whereas Dave was built, has built cooperative relationships and residents within the district, the City of Citrus Heights, and other government agencies and members of the community, he is commended for his dedication, dedication to leadership, tireless commitment to the Citrus Heights community by ensuring residents have clean, safe, and well-designed parks and facilities. Now therefore be resolved that the City of, City Council, the City of Citrus Heights does hereby congratulate Dave Mitchell upon his retirement, and Sunrise Recreation Park District wish him the very best in the end, in ending one, one chapter of his life and beginning another. So Dave, would you step, come up to the podium and say a couple of words for us?
Good evening. It's been 39 years. It's been quite the journey. It's been, it's been a glorious road. And working here at Sunrise Recreation Park District and working in the city of Citrus Heights and with this team in front of me and the teams before you and the staff of this city has been an honor and a pleasure. The, the drive of this neighborhood, this drive of this community, and the drive of the staff and the council here in Citrus Heights has been wonderful. Parks are an integral part of our community, and it's been my pleasure to serve this council and this community and those that live here. Citrus Heights is a fabulous place, and I've just been honored to serve 11 years here at this district and working with the parks and working with the people. I thank you for allowing me to, to take this position and to be here. It's been a joy all of my career to be in parks and recreation. I started out, you know, without going through my whole history, I started out as a park and rec kid myself. So I went to Warburnton Park in Sac, in Santa Clara where I grew up. I was one of the kids that was with the recreation leaders, and I looked up and I said, I want to be that person someday. I want to change people's lives. So I've just been fortunate to have a long career and, and do something I love and, and work with people that I love. My, today, my wife and my son are joining me here on the end, and my daughter is in Santa Rosa and couldn't be here tonight. So it's a pleasure to have people behind you that, that stand there and help you along your way. And then I have my staff, Margaret, Wayne, what's your name again? And Todd, just kidding. I've been retired two days. That's Marty, of course. So I threatened to come in shorts and a Hawaiian shirt tonight, but I, I opted not to. But thank you for this honor and thank you for the recognition, and you're in good hands. Sunrise is an excellent district, and whoever comes in and takes over the district administrator job, you, they've got a wonderful staff, and it's strong staff, and they're dedicated to the, the city, the community, and the park system here in Citrus Heights. So thank you very much for the.
So hang right there. So I want to offer the, the rest of the council to, who'd like to start? Okay, Dr. Jana, would you like to start with your praise of Mr. Mitchell?
Oh, well, praise, well praise. I lived and helped you with the Arcade Creek Park, and we just enjoyed working with you. That park is gorgeous. It will stay, and it's some legacy that you'll have and remember. But I think you've been here more than 11 years because you helped me get going with the first senior health fair, and that was in 2009.
Well, Todd and I look a lot alike, so.
No, Todd helped. No, no, Todd was integral, but you were, I thought you started out with it, helping us with that because you sure did persist.
I may have attended the, the health fair at the time. I started in June of 2012.
But I know the park itself, you know, blessed by you as the director, helped with that event for almost 10 years and maybe 11. I have to look back, but thank you so much for that.
Thank you.
And thank you for everything you've done to this community and the partnerships that you had with all the neighborhoods. It, it's unbeatable. You can't find that anywhere else.
Thank you, and, and your ability to gather volunteers. At Arcade Creek, before we got going, was basically a wild jungled area.
Homeless camps.
Right. We couldn't even get in there to have the contractors come in to give bids without cleaning it up or allowing pathways. And Dr. Jana and the Neighborhood Association and, and Tim.
Mesa Verde, the Mesa Verde kids, give them credit.
Yes, even get in there.
I think they're all graduated and grandfathers by now, but that was a good event. That was good. We enjoyed, and we enjoyed selling fireworks and giving you two years of our profits, so.
Thank you, thank you for that.
That was good.
So I remember when I first moved to Citrus Heights, and I was looking at the parks. It was one of the things that really attracted my family here. And I remember meeting you. I went over to the Sunrise, you know, Recreation Parks District, and I was looking around. I picked up one of those booklets, and I'm like, okay, it's summer. What are we going to do? And just the number of activities that were available for my kids to participate in was amazing, and it really took a lot of stress off of me, like, you know, summer school, you know, like, I didn't have to worry about it because I had things I could do. And I remember when you told me, you know, you need to put your oldest on the swim team. And I was like, oh, I don't know about that. I'm still a little bit mad at you about that. Saturday mornings were like.
It's a lot of commitment, yeah.
But it was a tremendous impact on them, and I'm so grateful for everything you've done to make our parks in Citrus Heights the way that they are because my kids thoroughly enjoy them. Thank you so much for your dedication and hard work.
Thank you for the kind words.
Well, Dave, my, my kids have all gone through the park and rec department, and I can credit you and your staff for employing my child for two summers as a, as a lifeguard, and I just so appreciate that. She used to take her bike and, and just be out in the sun at the pool all day, and she really, really enjoys those memories. So just your ability with the staff to provide meaningful summer programs for our kids in the community, just really appreciate that. And of course, you and I had a nice conversation during the wall that heals, and, you know, we are going to miss your touch in, in our community, so thank you.
Thank you. Being a lifeguard is a, is a very challenging job for the summer, so if you can make two summers of being a lifeguard, that's saying something right there, so.
Well, I just want to say thank you, definitely. I'm sure there are people out there that think that, you know, oh, it's just running parks, how hard can that be? And they don't even know. They don't even know. They don't know the hoops you have to jump through, the chainsaws you have to juggle, the funding comes from here, it comes from there. You're trying to keep Citrus Heights happy, you're trying to keep Sacramento County happy. So it's just, you're, you're, you're getting pulled probably in 27 different directions at all times, and it's probably why your hair's gone gray, I guess, but.
Maybe the length, too.
And so thank you for doing all of that and surviving all of that, and, you know, what a lucky man you are to, to do something in your life that you know when you're young that you want to do, to find out that you actually like doing it, that you love it, and that you get to spend your life doing it. There's nothing better in life than that right there. You know, the most time you'll do anything in life is, is your work, and to be able to do it like you got to do it is incredibly lucky, and the way you did it, we're all very happy. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
So I will say that I, we couldn't have asked for a better community partner. From the time that I first met you, I was president of Area Five, that your, your sense of cooperation, your leadership has been phenomenal. I, I'm just super impressed with how the, how the, the banks of the creek were reinforced with the trees that got cut down, just a really smart, smart way to, to reinforce the banks and to control erosion. The engineering side of that was just phenomenal. And again, I just can't, with, we start looking at all the parks that are in our area. Who knew that there are 26 parks in, in Citrus Heights in 14 square miles? We are park-driven. We have a lot of creeks. There's a lot of, there's a tremendous amount of work that you've made it look easy. And, and I can't tell you how much I appreciate the partner you've been, and I hope we, we can certainly, Wayne, we've met before, but I, I do expect that you, you put together a pretty darn good team, and they'll, they'll take good care of us until somebody else takes over, so.
You're in very good hands.
All right, very good. So I'm going to come down and we'll take a picture. I just want to join you.
Yes. Okay, Dave, would you like one with council first, and then we can do the big crew?
With the family, too.
Yeah, absolutely. Oh, we do full service around here. Okay. All looks great. Okay, friends and fans?
All right.
Whatever, do you want? Yeah, card launch. On photo request. I do.
Hanoverian.
Well, I'm not like a high-quality bitch here. Okay. Absolutely.
I can text you. Sure.
Okay. Happy to take any more photos. That's time.
Next item, please.
Next item is presentation number five, presentation by Republic Services, contamination penalties for residential customers.
Well, my presentation is not as special or touching as that one, so I apologize for that. Good evening, Mayor Schaefer, Vice Mayor Daniels, and councilmembers. I'm Anna Rulon with Republic Services, and I am here to talk about something not as fun, solid waste contamination. So tonight, I'm going to briefly go over the timeline in terms of Senate Bill 1383 and where we are with organics implementation, what outreach me and my team and the staff here at City Hall have done for the past several years. I'm going to touch on our local story here and what that organic waste is be, being used for. We will talk about the container audit process that we do out there in the streets, what those contamination tags look like that your residents are starting to see, and of course, the contamination fines that will be starting very soon. So for several years before Senate Bill 1383 went into, into effect, your city and Republic Services worked together to negotiate and come up with an amendment and start outreach. In January of last year, Senate Bill 1383 officially went into effect and became law, but here in the greater Sacramento area, we didn't actually implement it until six months later, July of 2022, so about one year ago. In October of last year, Republic Services started auditing carts and leaving educational tags when we found a heavy amount of contamination in those carts. In January of this year, Republic Services technically was allowed to start fining residents who had severe contamination in their carts. We did build in a six-month grace period, and that ended in January, but because of hesitations from the community and our great partnership with your city staff, we still have not fined anyone to this day. So here we are, it's June 2023. It's about a year after we implemented in the greater Sacramento area and about a year and a half after SB 1383 became law, and I'm here to focus on contamination tonight as those penalties will start happening very soon. I want to go over the outreach real quick that we did in partnership with your city staff because it was very comprehensive, and we truly believe that in order for people to hear the message about the new organics program and what to put in each cart, we have to do all forms of outreach, in-person, print mailers, online, social media, and other forms of outreach. I'm not going to go over every single bullet on this slide, but just a reminder of some of the big things that we did to get the word out. We attended neighborhood meetings, we hosted some community meetings, we did mailers. We do our 13-month calendar that we mail to all customers in Citrus Heights, and in 2022 and 2023, that calendar had a plethora of information. We did direct mailer postcards, bill inserts, targeted ads at Citrus Heights zip codes. And then one of the really big ones, which I'm sure many of you remember, was the pail delivery, which if you didn't get the message that organics was happening, you definitely got it when the pail showed up with the information inside. Here are some images of the outreach we did over the past two years. That pull-up banner is something that we had at our outreach booths at events. We took advantage of really fun events like the Halloween parade to have a banner on our truck. That's me presenting at a neighborhood meeting during COVID times, didn't even know the news was there, and they snatched that picture of me. Here are some images of the print mailers that we did, that we worked, of course, with your city on. And that last image on the right is one screenshot of our 13-month calendar that we had last year. We also did online targeted ads for Instagram and Facebook. And then, of course, the kitchen pail with the material that is on the outside of the pail and then inside the pail. And then lastly, we had door hangers and some other outreach here. And then we also partnered with the city and a video company to make a video specific to Citrus Heights and how it was going to affect residents that live in Citrus Heights. A former city staff member and her family were featured in the video. Here are some fun pictures that my husband took of me last week while I was making this presentation. So since it's a year into the program, I wanted to just go over some lessons learned and some tips for anyone who may be watching this presentation, because of course, we had one idea of what the program was going to look like, and now a year into it, we've learned some things. So the only bags that we allow in the organics container is no bag, a paper bag, or a BPI certified compostable bag. And I have to be honest and admit, the BPI bag is not the same as a normal plastic bag. It is not as hefty, it is not as strong. So some tips that we have for trying to keep that material contained inside your cart and avoid pests is to double bag it, that's what I do at my house, and to absolutely not fill it to the top with food waste. In my home, we fill it halfway, and that leaves a good amount of bag at the top. Me and my husband grab it, we twist the bag around so that the top is like a rope, and we tie a knot, and that's with two bags. And then we put that in our cart, and it keeps the material contained a little bit more and a little bit longer so that you don't attract pests and odors. Other ways that you can attract or not attract odor and pests is freezing your food waste and not putting it in the cart until the night before or the morning of service day. If you do have yard waste, using the yard waste to absorb some of the nasty parts of the food waste, and then, of course, rinsing out your pail or your cart occasionally. I have seen other tips online that I did not put on here because I have not validated if they are true or not, but I have seen things about like putting lemon on the outside of your pail, but I have not done any of those experiments yet. So these are the things that we know are true and will help. So our local story, once your residents put material into the bin, they don't really know what happens to it after that. They're putting their faith and their trust into Republic Services and the City of Citrus Heights to do something responsible with that material. So I wanted to tell you guys what does happen to that material. It comes to the facility that I work at, the Elder Creek Transfer Station, and we have a third-party partner there. Currently, they have people that pick through and take out obvious contamination. We get clothes, we sometimes even get car parts, sometimes just full bags of garbage. And then it goes to one of several different facilities in the greater Sacramento area. One example is a cattle ranch in Sacramento that until recently, the soil there was completely fallowed with no good nutrients in it, and the cattle had nothing to eat. Now that we have nutrient-rich soil that your residents help us produce, it goes to that cattle ranch, and it's completely changing the ecosystem there. It's making grass grow back, the cattle eat that grass, the grass even takes carbon out of the atmosphere, and because the soil is a completely different chemistry now, when it rains, the water doesn't run off, the water soaks down and goes and replenishes our underground aquifers, which is very important here in California. So this program is truly helping the circular economy with that cattle ranch, the global warming aspect, which was the intent of SB 1383, and it's helping for our droughts. So the auditing process, like I said, we've been doing this since October. I have an employee, it is not a temp worker, his name is Kanata, and he is the auditor for the City of Citrus Heights and the City of Rancho Cordova, so he switches off days in those two cities. He, he comes, he clocks in, and then he comes out to Citrus Heights. He tries to get there before 7:00 a.m. because the goal is to get there before carts are serviced by trucks, and he goes to a part of the city that is recycling day so that hopefully the trash recycling and the organics cart are out. He flips the lid and he looks at what's inside. He does not take anything out, he does not break the bags, he really is just looking at the top layer to see if there's contamination. Now, if there's no contamination, he'll just go to the next cart or the next home, after, of course, closing the lid. If there is contamination, he asks himself if it is severe or not. The intent is not to penalize people who are trying to do the program correctly. So he will leave a tag if he sees any amount of contamination just as an educational purpose, but once fines start, he will leave a tag and he will make a note if it was severe enough to actually process a contamination fee. Then he closes all the carts, and he will leave a tag on each cart where he finds contamination. And rewind, he doesn't close the lid yet. He takes pictures, two to three pictures, at least one of them will be of the contamination in the cart, and at least one of them will show the dwelling unit in the background that he believes created the contamination. He makes an audio recording saying the address so we can double-check that it is charged to the correct account, and then he closes the lids, does the tags, and he moves on. As of today, again, no fines have been assessed. When he comes back to the office, he puts all the information in there, even if there was no contamination, he still puts it in the system so that we know an audit has been done. These are what the tags look like. We have a separate one for trash recycle and organics so that it's very clear which cart had contamination in it. There are QR codes to go to other languages. And he marks what the contamination was, and if it's not one of the items on there, he'll write it in by hand. It is possible to get a cart tag on all three of your carts or just get a cart tag on one. Now regardless of if you get a cart tag on one, two, or three, the penalty is only a one-time penalty, even if all three of them are contaminated. And again, we haven't assessed any of these yet, but they will be starting. It is a $22 process fee, and it can be applied if there's contamination in any of the carts, and that does include the trash cart. This is very important. Up until recently, we have considered the trash cart to be the default cart. When in doubt, throw it out. Because of Senate Bill 1383, that is no longer the way of the world, or the way of California at least. We are expected as residents and consumers to understand what goes in the trash cart, the recycle cart, and the organics cart. So putting good, clean recyclables in the trash and putting food waste and organic material in the trash is considered contamination. Fines will appear on the next invoice. At Republic, we invoice every two months, so it can be quite a while until that fine is actually seen by the customer. So the cart tag serves as the first time that the service recipient sees that, and then the bill fine will serve as the second time. If a customer calls in, our call agents have access to the pictures and the audio and can send the pictures to the customer that calls in. We have the ability to talk to them and waive the fee, especially if it is not their house. That's why we take a picture of the dwelling unit in the background. Some of the areas in your city are high-density housing, and it can be quite difficult to know whose cart it is, and that's why we have all of that information so that if somebody believes that that wasn't their cart and that's not their home, we can waive that. That is all I have for you, but I imagine that you have some questions, so I am here to answer them.
Questions?
I'm sorry?
Dr. Jana?
First of all, I want to thank you, Anna, for the outreach that you've done. I mean, I, no one can say you didn't try, so it's not your fault that bill got passed, although I hope that someday your company, whoever company services the homes of the legislators, looks in their carts. Okay, so my first question is, you and I had coffee, Panera's. That cup, I'm just still shocked that the cup they gave me to drink, the paper cup is not recyclable.
Yes.
How do I know when I, so that's something, if I were home, I would put that in my recycle bin because I would think it's recyclable, it's cardboard.
Right. And a lot of people would think to put that in the organics bin, so there is a lot of confusion, and it's totally understandable. So any item that has a wax coating in it, it renders it non-recyclable, and also the folks that do the composting don't want it either. So the big problem comes around labeling. There's not a lot of legislation that requires people to label their products properly, and also a lot of the items that we use here in California are not necessarily manufactured in California or even America. And so when a company says something is recyclable or compostable, they don't actually know the hauler and the processor that's going to be dealing with that item. So my advice to everyone is always to ask. So my advice to everyone is always to ask their specific hauler what items go in, what each container. Because an item can say recyclable or compostable or biodegradable, and it's really just words and it doesn't necessarily mean anything.
So if I throw something in the recycle bin that isn't recyclable, is that's contamination, right?
Yes. Now if-
And that's not in bags, so he's going to see it. I mean, this is-
Yes. Yes, and if it was just-
Paper plates have a coating on them, don't they? So those aren't recyclable.
Correct. So it's just, if it's just a couple items, you may get an educational tag at that point, but you wouldn't be getting a $22 fine. Now, if the majority of your cart was filled up with those items, you would most likely get a fine.
Those little bags that we use?
Mm-hmm.
How, could you say fill them halfway? How long is it, I don't, I don't, we have chickens and we have a garbage disposal and we have hungry husbands. I don't have a whole lot to put in there. But how long, that's a big bucket.
Yes, so I do not have chickens and I have a toddler. And she eats one bite of her banana and then she's done with it. So I have a lot of food waste in my house. That's one of the most wasteful parts.
Maybe it could be options where, you know, like the garbage cans, you can have small, medium, large. Maybe we could get, you know, because, you know, I call it the swill bucket. And so it sits on my counter and it looks disgusting sitting there. I mean, it's-
Yeah.
It doesn't look good. So if you had it smaller, well, anyway, that's another story. Does your company do any efforts to legislate against things that are really worse than food contamination, like styrofoam or wax-coated plates? I mean, do you, you actually, because we eliminated straws, whoopee, you know, but we still have tons of styrofoam that goes in the garbage can, right? That's not recyclable.
Yeah.
Styrofoam.
No, it is not. At least it's not in our jurisdiction. Again, there are locations that will accept styrofoam. We do have people higher up than me that work with legislators. I do not know exactly what they support and what they don't support. But I know that all of my colleagues hate styrofoam because we cannot recycle it and it's very lightweight. But we also understand that for our business community, it's very cost-effective. And so it's kind of the-
Yeah, but they had like, I remember when we would ask people to, if they wanted to get a urine sample from their cat, to use these little styrofoam peanuts, you know, in the box. And then, but they make styrofoam peanuts that dissolve in water, so-
Yeah, the biodegradable ones.
And you can put them in the sink and just spray them with water and they disappear. So don't use those in the litter box. Also glad to know that they now make biodisposable, degradable surgical gloves so that the health profession now can, and they're, instead of the old night trial gloves and everything, so you can get disposable gloves that are, okay, so let me see if I had anything else. Yep, that's it for now. Thank you.
No problem.
All right. No other comments or questions? Okay, Vice Mayor Daniels?
Yeah, you touched on it, I just want to get a good clarification on it. So contamination, for the most part, is food items. And those are, if they're put into the regular trash can, then that would be considered food contamination or contamination. And then on the location, again, that clarifies that you're looking mainly into the regular trash can for food items. But you're also then checking the recycling bin?
Yes.
Or anything like that, and/or clothing? And then on the recyclable can, or the, excuse me, the trash can, the yard waste can, you're looking for those items, those food items to be in there and mixed around, hopefully, and whatnot. What you're not doing, if I'm hearing you right, is digging through the trash.
Correct.
If there's bags, if there's garbage bags that are tied closed, you're not going to be ripping them open-
Correct.
-to examine them. You're not going to be digging off the first six inches of yard waste to see if, you know, are there some fried eggs down there somewhere? You're not looking to see if somebody is putting organic waste in their trash can. You're looking to see if they're putting organic waste in the wrong can. Is that correct?
Yeah, so we are looking to see, in the trash can, there should not be organics or good recyclables. In the recycling, there should not be hazardous waste, clothing, definitely no food or liquids. And then in the organics, there should only be yard food and food soil paper. We do not do much digging, there will be no mess. You should not be able to tell anyone was there unless you get an oops tag. Now, we are not spreading that message at a very wide level only because I don't want anyone to hide their contamination at the bottom of their cart. But it would be pretty laborious for us to have to go through the entire cart.
And you're not making any evaluation on whether or not a family is putting out enough organic waste?
Not at all.
You waste bananas, but my kid doesn't, so.
No. We firmly believe in reduce, reuse, recycle, rot. So composting your food should be the last resort. Having no food waste is fantastic. Having other options like chickens or goats or pigs that eat that stuff, that's great. I just live in Cameron Park on a really small land, so I don't have any animals to do that for me.
Okay, all right. And thank you for your presentation. You always do a great job.
Thank you.
I just have a couple, well, number one, I want to thank you because we did, we met and I thought that you guys are really doing your diligence to try to make sure that the public is educated.
Yes, Mary holds us accountable.
Yes. We love Mary.
As do we.
So I do have a question about metal. Where does metal go?
So metal is recyclable. Now, I hate saying I don't know because I pride myself on being a recycling superstar. But I know for a fact that we want soda cans and that kind of metal cans. We want soup cans. And I have got a little bit of mixed messaging about large pieces of metal.
Like somebody took out a shower and there's some aluminum extrude-
Right.
-that came from the shower enclosure, does that go in the recycle bin?
I put those items in my recycle bin and I haven't been told to stop, so that's good. We, from my understanding, at our material recovery facility, we do have magnets that grab metal. But some metal is more magnetic than other metal. And so I can't tell you with 100% certainty that all those scrap pieces of metal are wanted. But we do advertise that people can put them in the recycling bin.
So, and most plastics are recyclable?
Plastics is my least favorite of the five recyclable items. The plastics that we are looking for, that we are able to easily capture and turn into new material, are rigid plastic containers. So that chasing arrows triangle means absolutely nothing. We do not like it in our industry. There's actually legislation out there to fix all of that. Flimsy plastic, we do not want it. Saran wrap, no. Plastic baggies, no. Styrofoam, no. But the majority of plastic containers that come out of households are good. It's just the flimsy stuff that we don't want.
Okay. All right, well, that's all I had. Thank you very much for your presentation. You did a wonderful job. Thank you.
Awesome, thank you.
Next item, please.
Next item is comments by councilmembers and regional board updates.
Let's start with Councilwoman Middleton, please.
Thank you, Mayor. Let's see, our Metro Cable meeting has been moved towards the end of this month, so I'll have something to report back probably in July because it's at the very end of the month. But I also want to talk about most of our kids in Citrus Heights are out of school, they're on summer vacation. Please, when you're driving through the neighborhoods, drive safely. I've noticed there's been a little bit of an uptick, you know, kids are outside playing, folks are not really being, you know, very much aware, they're kind of speeding through the neighborhoods and stuff. Just watch out for our kids, right? We want to make sure they're safe and they want to have a fun, enjoyable summer. And speaking of an enjoyable summer, also, please go out and check out the Sunrise Parks and Recreation District and their summer programming. There's a lot of affordable options out there. And I would just encourage parents to really put their kids out there. There's a lot of STEM and STEAM activities, swimming, as you heard me talk about earlier, and just a lot of things that our kids can be doing to stay active during the summer. And also make sure they're staying safe and cool. Please don't just throw your children outside in the heat and just leave them out there. That's probably not the most responsible thing to do. But I really want you to make sure that you're engaging our kids, looking at our summer activities. I know that we have, you should have gotten a flyer in the mail from the city talking about, you know, ice-free ice cream in our local communities. So be on the lookout for that if you haven't seen it, or check our social media channels. We are a very family-friendly city and I want to make sure our kids are really engaged this summer.
Great. Dr. Gina, what have you been up to?
I felt like I'm on vacation this last two weeks because there wasn't much, there were no meetings. We did go to a wonderful Memorial Day celebration at the Sylvan Cemetery. There were, we did find our first positive West Nile mosquito in Ileton. So now we will start additional trapping in that area. And so we will keep watchful eye on the other traps that we have set for. Just to remind people that this is West Nile season and to drain all the water. We had that rain the other night that came out of nowhere. So those little bottle caps that are full that can still host a mosquito development. And to let everybody know that the attempted ban of our police dogs failed. So I understand that that is now not an issue. So we get to keep our dogs. And that's all I have. It's been nice, no meetings.
Great.
But it's coming up.
Councilwoman Jane Taff?
All right, so I attended our Sunrise Marketplace Board of Directors meeting today. It's always such an interesting meeting, especially since we get some really great reports on what our police officer, Shoutin', is doing, as well as the security. And they are doing so much cleanup in that area that we, from our meeting last week or last time, you would not, you cannot imagine how much trash that they are picking up until they make reports to us. And just in the last month, they picked up 50 bags of trash and, you know, 50 shopping carts. And that's just a small sampling of what they've been cleaning up on our behalf for our business community. And so I was very proud to attend that meeting. It was also good to hear that they are welcoming certain business owners. And so we will be seeing more business signs of different types of businesses. And so I'm looking forward to that, but that's all I have.
Great. Vice Mayor Daniels, what have you been doing?
Nothing.
It's vacation time.
Yeah, not a lot going on. I did have the privilege, along with my other council members, to attend the Memorial Day Service Ceremony at Sylvan Cemetery. And it was, it was, as usual, something that just really kind of punches you in the gut. And if you haven't ever had an opportunity to do that, please put it on your calendar for next year. It's quite a ceremony. And then I also had the privilege today to attend the Citrus Heights Police Department Promotion Ceremony. And here's some great, incredible stories of leadership in our department, that long-term leadership, which I love, and then also homegrown leadership. And so congratulations to all of them, all well-deserved. And I think that's it.
All right, so I have, let's see, I had a CACOG Policy and Innovations Committee meeting. We went over with our consultants some of the active bills that are related to transportation that are working their way through the state legislature. But there's no, so there's no really, really thing to report out of that other than we're watching some really important bills come through. So I also as well attended the Memorial Day Ceremony at Sylvan Cemetery. It was well-done and well-organized. And I appreciate that the cemetery and, what's the group? I don't remember.
American Legion Post?
American Legion, American Legion Legion Post 637. And Paul Reyes did a phenomenal job, so I just want to appreciate that. And also was very proud to attend the promotion ceremony that was just prior to this one. So with that, I will move on to the next item.
Next item is consent calendar items six, seven, eight, and nine.
Move approval.
I'd like to poll number eight.
Okay. All right, we want to poll number eight.
Then I'll move all the other items except number eight.
Second.
We have moved to poll everything, all items but eight. And move with the consent calendar. Just want to make a comment that I really struggled with this, with item sevens and eights. But at this point in time, I think we're going to move six, seven, and nine forward. So all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Nope. So let's hear, what was your concern with item?
I would like a really, really short presentation about the item and including the cost involved with it. Really Reader's Digest version, Mary.
All right, thank you. May just, I do have a brief presentation that I can go over with you. Good evening, Mayor, and members of the council. Mary Poole with the General Services Department. And we also have Paulina Benner from R3 Consulting Group, which is our solid waste consulting group that's been helping us through 1383 over the past several years to help answer any questions if we need to. This item before you tonight is in agreement with Sacramento County and other cities in Sacramento County to provide our edible food recovery program. There is a recommendation to adopt the resolution authorizing the agreement. And just a brief overview of what is required by 1383. Earlier, you heard from Anna about 1383 in our residential program. This is another arm of 1383, which covers edible food recovery. Edible food is defined as food that's intended for human consumption. We're required, as a state, to recover 20% of the currently disposed edible food. Large food generators are required to recover as much edible food as they can. Food generators and recovery organizations must enter into agreements with each other. Jurisdictions, edible food generators, food recovery services, affectionately known as FROs, are working together to achieve these goals. We have a regional strategy that we have undertaken, recognizing that there is significant food insecurity within the Sacramento region, which is running at about 12% according to Feeding America. And we also recognize that this regional issue requires a regional approach. As Anna also mentioned earlier, reducing the food waste is the most important. The next step would be recovering any edible food that would otherwise be disposed. And that's what this program seeks to do. Under SB 1383 regulations, there are two tiers of commercial generators that are required to donate their edible food. Those are tier-one generators, which typically consist of your larger wholesale food generators like food vendors or grocery stores, food distribution. These, most of them already were donating, but as of January 1, 2022, they were required to donate. In January of 2024, tier-two kicks in and that will pick up your hotels, your large restaurant facilities, health facilities, state agencies, large events, as well as some local education entities. This is just a more of a clear definition specifically what tier-one generators are and tier-two generators. As I mentioned, SB 1383 requires the commercial edible food generators to donate the edible food otherwise disposed. Jurisdictions are required to play a major role in this process. We are required to educate commercial edible food generators. We are required to increase commercial edible food generators' access to food recovery organizations and services. Cities and local jurisdictions are required to monitor these edible food generators for their compliance. We're required to report. And we're required to increase edible food recovery capacity if the jurisdiction doesn't have enough capacity within the network that exists. So we, as a regional working group, the staff of your local cities who are part of this agreement have been working together for a few years now. We hired a consultant, we developed a plan that we submitted to the county. And as an out product of that plan, we have this MOU that the best practice was said, you know, the best thing for you to do as a region is to work together under this umbrella of an MOU, of an agreement. The county will lead it, you'll hire a consultant. The consultant will assist with making sure that the region meets its objectives. So that's where the MOU comes from. The MOU will achieve a number of benefits for all participating members, as well as the stakeholders, by achieving economies of scale, removing barriers between the jurisdictions. You know, the benefits between the generators by having one centralized group to manage it are numerous. We update the generator list, the tier-one and tier-two generator shift as time goes by. You have businesses coming online, businesses going offline, other types of changes. So those are required to be, by the law, they're required to be updated by October 1st. And that's also included in our agreement. And then the budget is adjusted annually based on the changes in the generator numbers, as well as the program needs. We have a number of program planning tasks, I won't go through them in detail. I won't go through them in detail, but just want you to know that there are a significant number of tasks that are associated with this agreement. And certainly can come back and go through them in further detail at a future date, if you like. And then we also have capacity planning tasks where we're coordinating with the, with the regional food recovery organizations and food banks, including our local Sunrise Christian Food Ministry, as well as coordinating with Ileton and Rancho Marietta. The schedule is starting with this action tonight, executing the regional agreement, and going through rolling out of services in December 2024. It's a two-year agreement that has been set up with the ability to turn it over on an annual basis for, I think it was eight years. But to the budget that Councilmember Daniels was interested in, so there is a 1.5 million estimated budget for year one. This is still being fine-tuned and will be, continue to be fine-tuned as we hire a consultant and then figure out what the program costs will be. That will all be a function of the edible food working group to hammer that out. But the estimate is about 1.5 million. Citrus Heights has about 600, or I'm sorry, 6% of that, which could also change as updates happen after the October 1 reckoning of the generators and so forth. But this is the budget. And I'm not sure if you had any specific questions about these numbers.
Do you have specific for Citrus Heights?
Yes. Citrus Heights estimated for year one is 85, well, about $86,000, and estimated for year two is about $113,000.
Okay. Thank you, Mary.
Oh, you're welcome.
So this is a state-mandated program?
It absolutely is.
And it's coming to us unfunded? Do we have to cover the cost of the 85,000 and then the 113,000?
Correct.
And the state's not offering to pay that bill?
The state is not offering to pay that bill.
So my, the rest of my questions are going to be, I think, for the city attorney. It's my understanding that, under California Constitution, Article 13, that unfunded state mandates are not allowed. Can you speak to that?
That is correct. You're correct, Vice Mayor, that Article 13 does say that the state legislature can't levy unfunded mandates without giving you some opportunity to recoup those costs.
And there is exceptions or exemptions to that. Does this fall under any of those exemptions that you're aware of?
I think the state would argue that Government Code 17556 says that if you have a mechanism to levy fees, that would be the, the exception to this unfunded mandate.
But that exemption is not indicated specifically in the law, correct?
That's correct, it's not.
And then, so here's my problem. I think it's wonderful that we're going to work together in a regional effort to reduce the cost, and that, that's a good thing. I think it's wonderful that you can take food, instead of throwing it in the garbage, and hopefully give it to people who can eat it. But to mandate it onto taxpayers, it's the taxpayers that end up paying for it. And to do that when it is clear the Constitution says you cannot do this. And if we're going to stand up here and raise our hand and say we're going to, you know, swear to, you know, good faith and allegiance to the Constitution, and we know we're getting something put on us that violates the Constitution, I can't support that. No matter how wonderful the idea is and whatnot, it's been made clear, and it was made clear because of the state doing this kind of thing, that they cannot do it anymore. And for them to do it, and for us not to do anything about it, to me, it doesn't really matter what the issue is. I mean, it could go to the extreme of, you know, California says, well, we want you to all turn in your guns. And, and we're all saying no. And then California says, Citrus Heights, you shall go out and pick up all the guns, and, and you shall incur the cost, and blah, blah, blah. Again, it would be unconstitutional. So I can't support this, no matter how wonderful it is, no matter how great it is. Again, I think the idea of the regional sharing of the cost and whatnot, because also it's going to fall back, if it does go to some other funding mechanism, it's going to fall back on the people who are, are having to take their food and give it to somebody else. They're going to have to pay a fee to do that. And, and of course, then they're going to pass that on to us. So it's a no vote for me, and I'll stop there. Thank you.
Any other?
If I could just add one more thing to, I appreciate all the sentiments on that. I understand that there is this dichotomy between the California Constitution and this Government Code section. I do think the state has that argument and would, you know, would litigate that, saying that they, the mechanism to fund it is through levying fees upon ratepayers. Although that doesn't feel good and seem right, again, I think that's the argument that they would make. And I felt like I needed to explain that to the city council, because there are other, this, this area of 1383 has not been litigated yet. Other, other state mandates have. And so there is a county of Fresno case on a, on a different type of matter where it was litigated and found that this mechanism to fund through ratepayers is detestable as is.
Who's the ratepayer here? The grocery store?
Well, really, it's going to be the person who pays for increased costs, I think, on the refuse. Meaning the homeowners or property owners.
From the grocery stores? I mean, from, so, and I don't understand how the, how.
Who's going to get charged the fee?
Who gets charged the fee? Not the households, because that's different. That's, that's Anna's department. I don't, I don't.
Anybody who pays Republic.
Who does the enforcement? Is, is our job, the city's job, to go out and make sure they're doing what they're supposed to do? Do we have to?
I'll defer to Mary on that, but I think that is what she.
We are required to monitor the generators for compliance. Where we go from there.
So do we have to hire staff to do that?
If we don't enter into this agreement, or a something like this, we would have, we would have to do it ourselves.
But even if you have an agreement, somebody's got to go and.
Correct.
Sure that.
Right. So that would be.
Prepared foods or foods that were ordered and not used? What, what kind of food is this? Is this food that can rot in the?
It's edible food. So there's a whole definition of what edible food is and what it isn't, for it isn't food that's going to rot in a day, it isn't food. It has to be edible, it can't be expired. There's a, quite an extensive definition of the types of edible food.
And so if someone gets sick, who gets sued?
Right. Yeah. But there, for, to speak to the fees, the, the recommendation is that the, it is funded or could be funded through franchise fees charged to the haulers. So the haulers, ultimately, the rate, you know.
You mean Republic Services?
Yeah.
Republic pays the fees?
And they pass it.
And then they pass it.
Which then gets passed on to.
Right. Right.
Ratepayers.
To residents, okay.
Or businesses.
Well, anybody, businesses as well. Anybody who pays Republic, which should include our businesses.
And my understanding is that the food closet down, the food bank, Sacramento Food Bank, is overwhelmed with food.
They have a lot of food there. So that's part of what the capacity study says. Does the current system have enough capacity to handle?
Do we help them build more closet space or refrigeration or whatever?
Jurisdictions will be responsible to fill the gap between what the existing infrastructure is to handle the food that's coming in and connecting that food to the people, the, the food recovery, the FROs, and the people who need it. So there will be that component as well.
Okay, Ryan, I just want you to make sure I understand this. If, let's say we just decide we don't want to do this, right? My understanding that the penalty is a $10,000 a day fine.
Correct.
Right? So if, for, if you don't comply, it might also, you know, put us in a bad position, like with some of the jurisdictions, if we don't comply, you know, we risk the wrath of, you know, the Attorney General, correct? I understand that, you know, we're passing the buck along to the taxpayer one way or another, but I think, you know, trying to litigate this, or $10,000 a day a fine, and if we had that kind of money, we could do a lot more stuff in Citrus Heights that would really impact, you know, our residents. I, I just don't see any other way, other than to kind of move this forward.
Jane? Okay. So, like I mentioned before, I really, really struggled with this whole thing, with both items seven and eight. And I understand that this is, to dovetail off of Councilwoman Middleton's comment, that if we don't adopt this, we're assuming the responsibility. It doesn't necessarily mean we're paying $10,000 today. It just means that the city of Citrus Heights, as a sole entity, is now responsible for their own, for managing our own program, where we have an opportunity to share that cost with other municipalities. And, and I get that. And so for that reason, I'm going to support this. One thing I do have a concern with, and that is something that Dr. Jane had touched on, and that's item 10 of this agreement, which is indemnification. And basically, I read through it, and it says, okay, we're, the, the, all the entities are indemnified against lawsuits if somebody gets sick. I do wonder, anything like this can be challenged in court, though. They could, we could see a class action of, let's say that 100 people got sick, and we're, they're nailing it down, and some attorney comes in and says, well, I got 100 clients. That's a lot of money that he could be, that could be on the line. I'm going to ask Ryan this. What's the possibility that, what's the chances that that could happen? That suddenly, some, we got, we hear a food safety issue that comes through the, on the news all the time. It's not that uncommon. But I, I do think that we're, we're assuming a certain amount of liability there. And even though there is this indemnification clause, I'm not sure that that's really much protection. Can you advise us on that?
Yeah, I understand your point, Mary. I think there's, obviously, the risk on both sides, right? So you have risk from litigation with the state, and then maybe risk on, on this. I would say the risk from the component being sued by, you know, a ratepayer or a member of the public is, is lower. But you know what? This is California, and it's a litigious society. I certainly think there's potential for litigation. I think a better question, or another thought I would have is, would our insurance cover such thing? My guess is, is not. You know, that might be outside their scope of coverage. But I think it's a good question. I think there is some risk, but I would, I would calculate that risk is lower versus not supporting the legislation.
Any other comments?
I got a question. I too will have to vote no under protest, I mean, yes, under protest, but somebody mentioned something, and you mentioned it, Ash, about Little Hoover Commission looking into this as being a crappy bill. Literally crappy. And I'm just wondering, I don't know what the Little Hoover Commission is. Educate me. What does that mean? Do they look at bills that are worthless?
Yeah, the Little Hoover Commission's a commission that really looks into things like this, and it's a bipartisan group that makes recommendations. And so they specifically, and this is something actually the, the mayor had shared with me, this report, and so I wanted to forward that out to the entire council as you considered this. But they're, they're recommending, and it's, 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 like I say, it's a bipartisan group, a number of experts that are also part of it, elected officials, and they're making some recommendations on doing some reform or putting a pause, hitting the pause button on some of the implementation measures. But ultimately, I think that there's going to be a lot of those type of recommendations that come out of bodies like the Little Hoover Commission. I know our council, too, has had a resolution to protest on this in the past. League of Cities has been talking about, how do we work through the implementation on this? So there's a lot of questions and a lot of push for reform. And certainly, we know that that's of interest to, to our council, and that's something that is of interest for our staff, too. So we're going to continue to work on trying to amplify that voice within the.
Maybe we could work with, with the other Hoover, our assemblyman, and, that's a good one.
That's a good one.
And Mr. Nilo, and see if we couldn't push that recommendation of the commission on faster, whatever it is, so.
Well, having that commission's report, now it was a draft report, but I think it's finalizing it at the end of this week. That is something that I think, if we put together like a letter-writing campaign to our legislatures and others, state representatives, it does continue to make that a louder call for reform. And so it is.
Well, that makes me feel better, that there's somebody else is looking into this.
Any other comments?
When that, when that report comes final, can you forward that to us, if you get it?
Absolutely.
Okay, thanks.
Any other comments? So just, just for my, just to sort of clear my mind here, what's, the decision that's in front of me right now is, what's the best decision I can make for this city that doesn't create a bunch of concern and liability from sanctions from the state? And at this point in time, we've seen, you know, you look at some of the Elk Grove's being sued right now for housing, not compliance with the housing issue. So at this point in time, I, I got to make the best decision, even though I hate this, I, I really, this SB 1383 is, when we take it to this level, I think that, that the intention in 2016 was a good one. I think the intention was, but when we take it to this very, the amount of waste that we're collecting, while, if we were to look at it and say, well, we collect how many tons of biowaste, it doesn't justify all the transportation costs and the, the implementation that it took to have another garbage truck and all this kind of stuff. We're chasing this little miniscule piece of trash, and we're spending an awful lot of money doing it. So with that, I'm going to, I'm going to call for a roll call vote on this item. We need a motion first. I have a motion, please.
Move Approval.
I second. Can we roll a call vote, please?
Councilmember Karpinski Costa?
Yes, under protest.
Councilmember Lopez Taft?
Same, yes, under protest.
And I didn't hear, microphone wasn't on, I just wanted to make sure that was.
Yes, under protest.
Councilmember Middleton?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Daniels?
No.
And Mayor Schaefer?
Yes, under protest. Thank you. Next item, please.
Next item is regular calendar, item number 10. The subject is Resolution Approving Community Project Grant Awards, and the recommendation is to adopt a resolution approving community projects grant awards.
Happy topic, finally.
Good evening, Mayor Schaefer and members of the city council. I am Megan Huber, Economic Development and Community Engagement Director. My colleague, Management Analyst Courtney Riddle, will be taking us through the majority of this agenda items presentation. But I wanted to start off with a little bit of background on how it came to be. The community projects grant was a result of really intentional goal-setting toward community priorities by city council. And staff created the community projects program via direction from a strategic objective that originated in our focus area work plan. And I know council's very familiar with that document. For those watching at home, the focus area work plan was a set of 48 recommendations in four key categories of community priority, including community image, economic development, infrastructure, and most importantly for this agenda item, recommendations on programs, policies, and initiatives that increase our final category, community connection. So that's how this program came to be. It was launched earlier this year to any eligible community group. And Courtney will continue by describing the process and eventual results.
So. All righty, sorry about that. Good evening. So again, I'm Courtney Riddle, and I appreciate your time this evening to go over this. I'm really excited to share it with you. So back in May 22 of this year, the strategic plan that you all adopted allowed us to move forward with the community projects, projects grants at $50,000 worth of funding that was allocated back in the September 22 council meeting. So I'll tell you a little bit about the program launch, because this was very exciting to me and some of the members of the audience here tonight. So back in March, pardon me, I realize you can't hear me. March of this year, we launched the application period, and it was open until the end of April. And it was open to all nonprofits in the city.
Excuse me, Courtney. I really am, I'm struggling to hear you.
I, I've been coughing for like 20 minutes. My voice is so. Let me try to get a little closer to the mic. I apologize about that. Okay, you guys tell me if you can hear me a little bit better now. A little better, okay. I'll try not to cough in the microphone. Okay, so the program was available to nonprofits in the community, and we had 12 applications, some of them. some of those folks who are in the audience today, with over $350,000 worth of funding asked. So again, lots of folks that were interested in the program. The application review process, we went through a really unique scoring process to make sure that we were looking at all aspects of the applications to make sure that from a qualitative and a quantitative perspective that we were evaluating them on their merit and making sure that they went through all of the eligibility requirements. So the next thing that I'm going to go through is I'm going to show you a little bit of the background on what we did. So back on May the 16th, staff met with the City Finance Committee to go over the rubric and to share with them the applications that we received. So this first part that you're looking at now is based on the eligibility requirements that were posted in the application and the guidelines that were online. It was a set of about 11 different items that were strictly a yes or no. In the application process, did the applicants go over each one of these items, again, that was spelled out in the application and the eligibility requirements? They were able to receive a maximum score of 11 points in this section. The next section allowed us to get a little bit deeper into the application itself, looking at whether or not they were able to clearly define how they were going to pay for their programs, whether they had additional funding sources, and they were scored with a high of five, that they clearly demonstrated that they have the ability to complete their projects, to a score of zero or one, if they showed minimum, minimal information on their application for their financial documents. Then we went through and we looked at their total budget, and they were awarded a score of five if they were requesting an amount less than 5% of their total budget, or a zero if they needed greater than 50% of their total budget from the grant. Moving down there, we also looked at whether or not they indicated how many community members or organizations they were able to partner with and serve. So if they indicated in their application that their program or event was going to serve greater than 1,000 community members, they received a score of five, or if they didn't indicate that at all, they received a score of zero. Moving through the rest of the budget, again, we asked for a very detailed budget as a part of the application process, and they received a score of five if they provided a very strong, realistic budget that showed how they were going to complete their project or event, or a score of one if they provided sort of high-level, non-detailed information. The last two sections talked about their programs and events specifically. Did they clearly summarize what they were going to do and how it met the objectives of that focus area plan of serving the community and creating community connections? Again, the high range was that they would receive a score of five there, or low, a score of one if they did not provide enough detail to show us how they planned on serving the community, and again, meeting that goal of community connection. The last part of that was, again, did the applicant clearly define what their outcomes were going to be, what their goals were in serving the community? Was there a clear definition? They would be awarded a score of five, or again, they did not provide enough detail where they would be given a score of one. So of the applicants that were presented and that the Finance Committee reviewed, those that scored above 30 out of the number of maximum score of 39 were recommended by the Finance Committee for award. Looking at the rubric and looking at the groups that provided that information, five of the 12 applications scored in that category with an award amount of $22,400 for the five groups. So this slide here represents our first set.
One moment, please. Mayor, I want to make sure that we know when it comes to taking action on one of these items, I will have to recuse myself. I have a relative who is actually part of Citrus Heights Arts.
Thank you.
And same with myself, Mayor. When it gets to that portion, I am employed by one of the organizations.
Okay.
Thank you.
And I live in Citrus Heights.
Just for the audience edification, he was talking about, he likes to go to the mall, so they're joking.
Mr. Mayor, I think the way we've got this set up is, on this recommended application set one, this would allow for the entire council to participate in these first set of recommendations. After this first set is over, then we'll speak to, who recuses himself when, and we'll go through those semantics.
Okay, so, appreciate that. So looking at the first slide, we did take that into consideration today, and the first set of recommendations is for three groups. The first is the Citrus Heights Women's Club, for them to distribute their friendship bags filled with essentials for, at senior apartments and facilities. Their total budget was $15,000, and the reward that was recommended for this council's consideration was for $5,000, and they received a score of 29 out of the 39. Again, one of the higher scores. Royal Stage also has an application here for a community open mic and talent contest. Over a period of about 12 months, depending on demand, they can have up to 50 to 60 participants at each one of their events. They requested a total budget of $13,000 for those events and requested $6,720 from the award. And the request from the Finance Committee was to only award $1,900 because certain aspects of their budget indicated they were looking to have expenses funded that were not eligible. They received a score of 32. The last was the Sunrise Christian Food Ministry. They also have a program that will target up to 60 residents benefiting up to 500 people individually as family members to create a food program and cooking classes. The amount they requested was for $2,000, and the committee recommended that they be awarded $2,000, and they had a score of 32 out of the 39 possible.
And Mayor, I just wanted to check and see if we had any public comment for the first three that are before council at this moment, before the council takes action on this first set. I don't have any speaker sheets.
Is there, okay, so I'll go ahead and ask for public comment from the audience. Would anybody like to come forward and speak on any, on these items? Okay, please come forward.
I'm Jean Marie Welby with the Citrus Heights Women's Club, and I want to thank you all for this opportunity.
Hi, Jean, would you give me a favor? When you're finished speaking, when you're finished speaking, would you fill out a speaker card and give it to the...
Yes, definitely.
That'd be great.
Yes. We did go through our budget and adjust it based on the 5,000 that we requested, and then we also made some adjustments in our statement that we had submitted. So I'm going to give that to Megan and Courtney to show that. And we realized when we saw what we had, that adjustment was needed because we saw what we had in storage. And so, I just, I'm really excited about what we can do for the community in these friendship bags and provide to the community and partner with others will be outstanding. All right?
Can I make a suggestion for you?
Yes.
If you had asked some of the neighborhood associations for assistance in accumulating some of those products to put in your friendship bags, I'm sure that the neighborhoods would love to help you fill those bags.
Awesome. I will start with, with Area 11.
And I know Jody will, Jody will do it, and so will Area 10.
Yeah, yeah. I know Jody Ashwell. Thank you for the suggestion, Jaina.
Let's make a list of the items that you would like, and we'll get them for you.
Awesome. I think this will really benefit people, especially the seniors, we're going to be really working with them because oftentimes they'll go into, you know, assisted living, going into a new community and forget, you know, a lot of the needed items that they need. All right.
We look forward to working with you.
Thank you so much. I do, too. Yes. And I needed to fill out a...
Come forward.
My name's Tammy. I'm from Royal Stage. I just wanted to clarify one thing that was probably clear to you but wasn't to me when I saw it. The open mic community events aren't for 65, 50 to 65 people. That's how many people can participate and perform in them in one evening. We can hold up to 450 people to come attend them. And also with that, I just want to say thank you so much for the city continually being supportive. We just got the history and arts grant funding from you also, and we're just super appreciative and sing your praises over at the theater. So thank you for that. And also, I didn't know that some of the things on the application were out of budget, so if there's an opportunity to learn from that, so we know better next time, I'd really appreciate that feedback, so that's all. Thank you.
Megan, is she part of Citrus Heights Connect?
You know, Jaina, I'll double-check on that.
Because her events ought to be on that calendar.
I agree 100%.
And I have no idea what that is, so I don't think so. So, we checked. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, moving on. So, do we have a motion?
Can I make a comment before we do a motion? It is chucked.
Yeah.
I want to make a comment, as I was on that committee, and I want to comment on the process that you used to come to these. It was a lot easier when it's so objective because your passion is you want to fund everybody everything they want. And so you have to look within reason of what the, what we have, what, your criteria was so good that it made it easier to come to these decisions. I also want to thank the people who participated and maybe didn't get anything, but staff can go over with you where you were short, and there is going to be a second round of applications for the rest of the dollars, and so encourage those people plus new people to apply for these types of, kinds of community events. And I just, I really am impressed with that metric or rubric, whatever you call it, that it was the thing. And that was it. That was what I wanted to say.
I appreciate that. Thank you very much.
Comments from council? Brett? Okay. All right. Am I ready for a motion now?
I'll make the motion for set one, that we have a resolution approving the community project grant awards, set one.
Second.
All right. Roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Karpinski-Costa?
Yes.
Councilmember Lopez-Taff?
Yes.
Councilmember Middleton?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Daniels?
Yes.
And Mayor Schaefer?
Yes.
So we'll just take a brief pause. The next, the next one, which council member?
I believe it's Councilmember Lopez-Taff would...
Okay, set two is, I'm too close. Set two is recommendation for the Junior Achievement of Sacramento to provide 200 young people ages nine to 25 with guidance to explore entrepreneurial opportunities through motivation interactions and local entrepreneur innovators. So they requested $10,000 of the $10,000 budget. The committee recommended $3,500. Again, they did indicate there were items in their budget that were not eligible for coverage, so the committee recommended $3,500, and they received a score of 32.
Move staff's recommendation?
Second.
Any comments from council? All right, we have a motion in the second. Roll call vote.
And I just wanted to check, there wasn't any public comment on this set as well?
Any public comment on this item? Seeing none? Let's go ahead and have a roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Karpinski-Costa?
Yes.
Councilmember Lopez-Taff is absent. Councilmember Middleton?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Daniels?
Aye.
And Mayor Schaefer?
Yes. Motion passes. Next item, please.
And we'll just briefly pause while we switch.
Next set, actually.
Okay, so set number three was for Citrus Heights Arts to perform a series of music and arts events over, over the summer, the third Saturday of each month in July and August. The budget was for $23,450. They requested 10,000, and the committee recommended 10,000.
Move approval of set three funding.
Second.
Okay, any public comment on this item? Anybody like to comment?
No.
Seeing none?
No.
All right, may I have a roll call vote, please?
Councilmember Karpinski-Costa?
Yes.
Councilmember Lopez-Taff?
Yes.
Councilmember Middleton is absent. Vice Mayor Daniels?
Hmm. Aye.
And Mayor Schaefer?
Yes.
Next item is regular calendar, item number 11. The subject is Senate Bill 1, Road Maintenance and Rehabilitation Account Funding and Project Expenditure Plan for Fiscal Year 23-24, and the recommendation is to approve a resolution approving the fiscal year 23-24 project list to be funded by Senate Bill 1, the Road Repair and Accountability Act of 2017.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and Councilmembers. Regina Cave, General Services Director. This item before you is administrative in nature and is an annually reoccurring item that must be acted on by the council. For any agency that receives SB1 funds, which is an increase in gas tax funds, any agency that receives funds, we must pass by approval, resolution, and expenditure plan, and that is submitted to the state every year by June 30th. This is part of SB1's transparency provisions within SB1. So for the audience, SB1 was enacted in 2017 and provides increased funding through increased gas tax at the pump paid for by the users, and those funds can be used for multitude of transportation enhancements, projects, and programs. And so for Citrus Heights, this number is actually revised to an estimated of $2,125,472 for fiscal year 23-24. That was just updated last week on the state comptroller's website. However, we do not typically budget for the full amount, just we want to be able to provide ourselves a little bit of buffer because sometimes those actuals come in less, and so we want to make sure that we're not budgeting for the entire amount. And so as we identified within the CIP, that was approved by council and part of the budget, we identified San Juan Complete Streets and Pavement Restoration Program to be funded by SB1 funds in 23-24. It was $1,370,000 for pavement restoration and $430,000 for San Juan Complete Street, so a total of about 1.8 million. And that delta will be kept as cash in the reserve under our SB1 fund, so if we have good bids, favorable bids that come in on any one of those projects, we can add more money to those projects to increase some of the areas that we will be paving. So staff's recommendation is for council to approve the resolution approving fiscal year 23-24 project expenditure plan to be funded by Senate Bill 1, the Road Repair and Accountability Act of 2017. And I'm here to answer any questions.
Questions from council?
Just on the 2.1 million and how that's figured out, is that what we get when somebody puts gas in their car in Citrus Heights, or is it some formula that all the money comes together and we get it based on something else?
It's a huge formula of different sections as part of the highway user tax account and the RMRA or the routine maintenance rehab account, and so we get different amounts of money depending upon the different sections that are classified under the highway users' tax. So for instance, 53.9 cents per gallon is taxed. When you go to the pump, you pay 53.9 cents per gallon, and 13.7 cents of that is SB1. So the delta is different formulas of gas tax that gets distributed to different programs, such as the State Highway Improvement Program, the SHOP program, different grants, the state's debt service, and then that piece of the SB1 comes back to different agencies, the counties, the cities, and also formulaic piece that goes into grants as well. So it's very confusing, a lot of different numbers to understand, but we are supposed to be getting is our fair share.
Thank you.
So the 2.1 for San Juan, or part of the money for San Juan, is that in addition to the SAICOG grant that we got for San Juan?
Correct. So we still have to have a match to those different funds that we're receiving from SAICOG, and so this will serve as match, and also some items that are not eligible as part of, because not all of the grants that we receive can pay for everything within a project. Sometimes there's items that are non-participating.
And then I have a really small little question. Okay, Dewey Drive, right? I just was so happy you're going to pave it because I would not want to be in an ambulance going down that road on my way to the hospital, especially if they're trying to put a little catheter in my arm. So my question is, and I, I don't know, I asked somebody who lived down that way, what the, if they have a problem with heavy truck traffic, like on their way to Walmart, you know, if they don't come up Dewey to go to Walmart? And so if that's true, and I don't know if it is, can we post that not a truck route to tear up our beautiful streets?
And we'll have to look... We'll have to look to see if that is a style route. So style route would be for the oversized trucks and for deliveries, so we will have to look to see.
Yeah, I don't know how to measure that, and I don't know, you know, if you can just believe one person, because everybody says their street is worse. So anyways, if we could look into that, and if it is a truck route, make it not a truck route?
Well, it's commercial area, so a lot of our commercial arterials do allow for certain-sized trucks to be able to provide deliveries, but there is some style route regulation, so for some of the oversized trucks that are not permitted.
For the big semis.
Correct.
Yeah. Okay.
My experience, I don't see much in the way of trucks on Dewey.
Do you live near there?
I live very near there.
We will take...
I do Dewey all the time.
Okay.
I don't use, I don't see trucks there much.
Well, I'm glad it's getting paved.
Yes, me, too. Any other questions from council?
Move staff's recommendation.
We're moving, second?
Second.
Motion in the second. Can I have a roll call, please?
And I just want to confirm, I don't have any speaker sheets for this item as well.
Oh, thank you, thank you, thank you. Any public comment? Anybody want to speak on this item? No? Okay. Seeing none? Roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Karpinski-Costa?
Yes.
Councilmember Lopez Taft?
Yes.
Councilmember Middleton?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Daniels?
Aye.
And Mayor Schaefer?
Aye.
Next item, please.
Next item is Department Report Number Twelve, and the subject is the City of Citrus Heights Website Redesign. So, good evening, Mayor and Councilmembers. Amy Van, City Clerk. So I'm here to give the department report on this tonight. This is something that with our current website provider under our contract, we're able to have a refresh or redesign of our website about every five years. So this is, was a seventh month, seven-month-long project, so I'm happy and pleased to present tonight the redesigned website that really serves as the hub for all things Citrus Heights, while at the same time, it's organized in a way that continually reinforces our Citrus Heights' solid roots, new growth. So here you have on the screen our redesigned website. First, I would just like to highlight, we have at the beginning, at the top of the page here, our global navigation, so residents can do, look at the drop-down list to see if there is something that they're looking for. I would like to note that this global navigation is static, so as you scroll down the page, that navigation will remain at the top of the screen. So as people are visiting our website, they will be able to see maybe something at the top. It has a link to our police department as well as the fire department, and there's a search function to do a search of our website. And then, as you can see here, the rotating banner with our graphics and photos of the Citrus Heights area. This is a dynamic function of the website where we are able to highlight, like we have here, our Stars and Stripes event, which is a clickable link that residents and families can click on and to learn more about the event. So we'll, we will be able to change out this section of the website and utilize it for different things that we have going on throughout the year. And then next here, we have some graphic links. So we've updated, you know, the colors, the fonts. It's still keeping with our solid roots, new growth campaign, but we really strove to use colors that were complementary to our branding colors and really are attractive. And so we redesigned the graphic links for things that people are most interested, our agendas and minutes, job opportunities, how to submit a concern, things of that nature. Something that's significantly a big change on our website is these three boxes here, which are Apply and Pay, Report, and Connect. These are quick links, and we really taking into account analytics, website analytics, to understand what our customers are looking for, really drove the end result here of what you see, of quick links to apply and pay for alarm permits, animal licensing, business building permits, et cetera, as well as to report. You know, we have a link to our See Click Fix, so that people can report a concern. And as well as how to connect with the city and different, our neighborhood associations, connect with us on social media, follow our news to receive alerts, and things of that nature. So we really think this will really enhance the customer experience, so that they can quickly find what they're looking for on our website. Here we have our news and highlights section, so it's a little bit more compact. We don't have as many graphics as we had previously had on our previous design, but you can see our most recent news items here, and if you want to read more, someone can click on View All News, and they can read all of our city news that we have posted. We also have a section here that is also a slideshow that we're able to highlight specific projects, such as our Comprehensive Annual Financial Report, or the Sunrise Tomorrow Project, or any other item that we wish to highlight. We can create a graphic link here and provide a link to the document or a page on our website. So it's just visually appealing if somebody wants to read more about something. And then down here, as you continue to scroll, we have revamped our calendar for events and for meetings, and kind of broken it up into two parts. We have a tab here that's Events, so all of our Neighborhood Association Meetings, the Collaborative, Connect, events such as the Stars and Stripes event will all be listed here on this event section. And then if you click on the Meetings tabs, if you're wanting to attend any of our city meetings, we have them listed there. You can click on the links to the meeting to find out more about those meetings. And then down here at the bottom of our website, we have ways that members of the public can connect with us on our social media accounts, and other quick links and site link information on how to contact us. But with that, that concludes my presentation, and I'm pleased to present the redesigned website. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Question from council?
Just a comment. I think you, you and your team did a really, really good job. I like that it's modern, clean, uses all of our branding elements, and it's very attractive, so thank you.
Thank you.
Any comments, Gina?
I, too, think you did a great job. My, only one comment. Up top, where you have the little blue badge and the little campfire, I would not have known that was fire and police. I mean, I just, little star means, you know, Yelp. So it, to me, I wish it would say Police.
And we are looking into some of those. We had received those comments, and we're looking into that to see what we can do, but thank you, I appreciate that.
But it's a great web, it's so much better than the Swiss chart that was there.
Thank you.
Brett, Cal, comments?
What they said. No, it's nice. It's very, very nice. It's very user-friendly for us old people, so that's nice. Good job.
I agree. Very, well done. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, next item, please.
The next item is the City Manager Items.
Thanks, Amy. Well, good evening, Mayor Schaefer, Vice Mayor Daniels, members of City Council. Ashley Feeney, you're City Manager, and I do have a few updates. First, really excited about the webpage. As somebody gets frustrated on navigating websites, I think we've got a huge improvement, and just really appreciate all the work that Amy and the team put into that. So I think that's, that's gonna be great, and I think the community will appreciate that, and certainly if there's recommendations for further improvements, that's something we continue to work on, too.
Don't they give out awards for websites for cities? You should enter that. It's pretty good.
That's definitely a great comment on that. One thing that I just wanted to highlight here before we jump into the other slides, is there's a, I'm holding a mailer, I don't know if this is showing up on television, but in mailboxes here in Citrus Heights, if you don't already have it, and I think Councilmember Middleton mentioned that it arrived in your mailbox at the outset of the meeting, but we've got a flyer here, and it, hey, there's, Councilmember Taft has it, Lopez Taft, and on one side, it's Beautifying Our City Together, and so it has all the different reporting methods, and talking about our Citrus Heights Cares Campaign that the council embraced, and we're rolling out as a staff team, but Report, Maintain, Chip In shows the various reporting methods. We really want that out within the community. And then on the back, Save the Dates. We've got a lot of fun happening here in Citrus Heights throughout the summer. So we've got the Stars and Stripe Event at the end of this month on July first, City Scoop, that's gonna be a lot of fun, turn out, meet your neighbors, learn more about your city services and neighborhood associations, and then get an ice cream cone, too. That's great. And then we also have our other events, Sunday Fun Day, State of the City, Annual Tree Lighting, and the Block Party Trailer down at the bottom. Actually, Citrus Heights was recently featured in the LA Times, talking about some of the great things that we're doing here with the Block Party Trailer, and we did change the logo. It used to say Rent Me, it says Reserve Me. It is very low drag to have a black party, and so we want folks to utilize this trailer, and so that's also mentioned on the mailer here, and appreciate the team that was all involved in putting this together. I think it's a, it's a nice piece of literature that should grab some attention. So if we can go to the next slide, please. Some more good news here. Our Citrus Heights Police Department is partnering up with our Sacramento County Probation Officers, where we're actually embedded in housing a couple of probation officers at Citrus Heights PD, and they're doing some joint efforts to really paying some dividends here in the community, keeping our community safe. You can see Officers Herrn, Schmidt, and Ibera are both at the Citrus Heights PD, and they turned out actually at our recent General Services Celebration of Public Works Week. We're out there in the community, meeting our community members as well. They're definitely working very closely with our impact team, as well as looking to combat chronic offenders and nuisances that we deal with here in the city. So that's been a great development, and appreciate their good work and that of our police department. And as was discussed earlier, heartwarming ceremony started at five here, where we recognized some terrific promotions within Citrus Heights Police Department that was spoken to, you know, by several of our council members, and it was terrific to see our entire council turn out for that, very much appreciated. You can see that we have a couple of lieutenants, Lieutenant Sean Gualco and Lieutenant Ken Lewis, that received their promotions. We also have our Communications Supervisor, Regina Harmon, who received her promotion, and we also have two new sergeants that were promoted, Sergeant Jacob Stadleman, as well as Sergeant David Wisenflue. So great to see those promotions, appreciate their leadership, and excited what they bring to our command staff and management staff. Shopping carts. As you can see in one of the pictures, we could outfit a supermarket, and then some, with some of the shopping carts that our General Services Department Team and Beautification Team have been collecting. So our GSD, General Services Department and Beautification Team have really stepped up the efforts on cart abatement in the public right-of-way, especially with our shopping cart ordinance that this council approved being rolled out. You can see five hundred and thirty-nine shopping carts were retrieved between November first and June first of the year, and since just June first, we've had thirty-nine carts retrieved, and these were carts that prior to the passage of that ordinance and bringing on the beautification crew, they may languish on the sidewalk or our creeks or in our neighborhoods for some time. So this is really kind of a testament to the work of the City Council, our staff team, in really, you know, trying to beautify our city and take measures to do so, and it is paying dividends. Most of the carts are abandoned carts, some have debris in them, but our staff is storing these in our utility yard. We have been communicating with businesses to come get their carts and basically continuing to follow the measures that are outlined in that shopping cart ordinance. So I just wanted to kind of highlight that as well. And that concludes my comments.
Great. Thank you. All right, next item, please.
Any other question?
Oh, yes.
Have we implemented any of the fines for the carts? You know, if they don't come and get them after a certain period of time, don't they, doesn't the ordinance require a fine? Has that been, has anyone gotten a fine yet?
We're in the early stages on the fines. I don't know that we've actually had any fines put out. We're still in the educational phase with our businesses.
Walgreens, didn't this article say they lost all their carts or gone out of Walgreens?
I, those carts are expensive. There's a big fleet that's sitting there. It is surprising to see that they're not getting picked up quicker, but we're working with our businesses.
You'd think they would put their carts on the inside of their store, when now they're putting them on the outside, and it's so easy to walk away with it. You'd think they would just, in the old days, they had them inside the store, at least, anyways, that would be.
Well, we're definitely working with all of the businesses on the plan for the shopping cart that are required under the ordinance, and some of them are actually looking at some new tools to make sure that their carts stay on-site, which is really the objective of the plan.
That's right.
So, following the plan and looking forward to the results.
Well, I just hope that they get the message that they need to do something to keep their carts at home.
Any other comments? All right, can we move on to the next item, please?
The next item is Items Requested by Councilmembers and Future Agenda Items.
Anybody? Nope. All right, seeing none, I'm gonna ask for the next item, please.
Next item, we have no further items.
All right, so I think it's time to adjourn at seven forty-five. Thanks, everybody, for coming.